All right, I will call our meeting to order at this time. Well, we want to welcome you to our June 5 Ballin County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and if you will stand with me at this time, we'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Our Father, we're thankful to you for this day, we're thankful to you for the opportunity we have to have this meeting tonight. We pray that you'll give us wisdom and insight if we conduct the business in this county, and thank you so much for this great county we live in, for all those that make it that way. And Father, we just pray now that you'll just bless us during this time. We pray this in the name of Jesus, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll call the roll. Brandon Bias, Robert Davis,
here.
Scott Schamberger,
here.
Michael Mullet,
here.
Greg Seibert,
here.
Jamie Stradiger,
here.
Diane Burnett,
here.
Michael Fletcher,
here.
George Waters,
and Reed Key. Okay, we have a quorum. We're going to do something a little different
tonight than what we've done in the past, members. We are going to start approving our agenda, and actually tonight, I'm going to ask that we approve our printed agenda with the addition of case number PER 25-27, the horse subdivision extension that we talked about in work session. So with that, I'd like to have a motion that we approve our agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Is that Mr.?
Schamberger.
Mr. Schamberger, you're right next to him, looking further down. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Mullet, second motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Chairman votes aye also. All right, you each received a copy of the minutes, copies of the minutes of the May 1 work session and the regular meeting. There are no changes to those that entertain a motion that the minutes of the May 1 meetings be approved.
So moved.
Mr. Mullet has made the motion to be approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Davis has seconded the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chairman votes aye also. All right. Mr. Dixon, did you want to say anything? At this point, it's not on the list there.
No, I'll delay my comments in the public hearing portion.
Okay. All right. We have, we have three items on our consent agenda. All three of these were, well, let me just go ahead and read these out. These are case number PER 25-17 Silver Springs subdivision extension, PER 25-18 Iron Horse subdivision extension, and then the PER 25-27, which is the horse subdivision extension. These are not public hearings, but they're on our consent agenda, and as such, I'm going to ask for a motion for approval of these.
So moved.
Mr. Schamberger has made a motion for these to be approved. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Davis has seconded the motion.
Vote.
Excuse me, Mr. Mullet has seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye also. Consent agenda has been approved. All right, at this time now, Mr. Dixon, I see that now, you changed it up on me a little bit.
Okay, so quickly get through our public hearing guidelines. There, we do have several little hearings tonight, just as a kind of pressure. For everyone, the applications that require public hearings include subdivision, subdivision variances, highway construction setback appeals, conditional use, commission site plan approvals, and any subdivision regulation or zoning ordinance amendments. So those are the categories that trigger public hearings. As we talk about every month, you know, during the public hearing section of the agenda, if you're here to speak, please sign up out front in the lobby for the case number you're here to speak on, and when you're called up to the podium by the chairman, just state your name clearly in the microphone. It is recorded, so try to speak into the microphone as best you can. Direct all the comments to the chairman, and he can disseminate those comments to the appropriate people. Then comments should be focused on the application that's being presented at that time, and not some other topic. And then comments from individuals are limited to three minutes, and if you're here speaking on a group, just tell us what group you're representing, and the chairman can give you five minutes for a group. On the subdivision cases, just a reminder to everyone that the state law is very clear about this. If the subdivision application has met all of our regulations, we're required by law to approve them. So that's something you will hear about during all of our staff reports. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions for the, Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, sir.
The only thing I'll add to that is, please know that I will call for you to come up to the podium here to speak. We will ask that you please honor the timeframe. You'll have a buzzer on the speaker that'll go off. Please know that when you have spoke your three minutes and we go through, and I close the public hearing, it is closed. Don't raise your hand to ask or speak again, or follow up after that. It's closed, and it's just time for us to discuss and make a decision. Appreciate you doing that for us. All right, with that, we're going to open the public hearing for our first case number, which is SC 25-13, which is a replat of Lot 5 of Cypress Hollow. Does anybody on the planning commission need to clear prior communication on this item? Ms. Waters, I understand you're going to do all of these tonight, so I'll just-
That's correct. You're going to get tired of me today.
All right, have at it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is application case number S213 replata of Lot 5 Cypress Hollow subdivision. This request is for a two-lot residential subdivision located in Pliny District 7, unzoned. As I mentioned, two-lot subdivision. The smallest lot size is 3.9 acres. The public utilities proposed are septic systems, wells, and Baldway AMC as the power provider. Steph did review a wetlands delineation submitted, and the appropriate buffers are reflected. The original approval of the Cypress Hollow subdivision required an installation of common drives between lots 4 and 5, and due to the highway function classification of Jimmy Faulkner Road of a major collector, a minimum distance of 240 feet between the driveways are proposed between lots 5A and 5B. Steph's recommendation is of approval with some minor conditions as reflected on the screen to correct the data tables from the largest and smallest lot, reflect the wetland setback on the site data table, and add a note stating that any improvements to the existing culvers and access near the jurisdictional wetlands will require additional permitting from the U.S. Corps of Engineers. Here is your vicinity map and your plat. And as you can see, zoomed in here on the top right corner, the applicant has reflected that they can meet the distances between the driveways, the existing and any new proposed. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. So I'm going to ask our staff, did we have anybody signed up on this one? Okay. Make sure my screen said there was not, but I want to make sure. All right, no one signed up. Is there anyone with the applicant here, representing the applicant that wants to speak? All right. With that then, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'm sorry, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now-
Close. I'll make a motion for approval for case number SC 25-13.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Mr. Schamberger has made the motion to approve. Mr. Mullet has seconded the motion. Any question on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye also. All right, that item is approved. Open public hearing now for case number SC 25-20, the Quinley Farms subdivision. See if I need to clear prior communication on this item. Okay, Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application was prepared by Ms. Booth, but since she was not able to be here today, I'll be presenting it for her. This permit request is for a two-lot subdivision. The property is located on Pliny District 1, unzoned, where the smallest lot size is about 15 acres, and the total property is about 30 acres. The utilities reflected are water wells for the sewer on-site septic, and Southern Pine electrical as the electrical provider. Wetlands were identified, and Steph was provided wetland delineations for review, and the appropriate buffers are reflected. Steph is recommending approval with no conditions. Here's your aerial map, and here is an enlarged image of the preliminary plat, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for staff?
I know it came up in the work session, Bobby, but they do have buildable space on that one lot, correct?
Yes, they do. They have at least a minimum of 40,000 square feet of upland areas contiguous on each lot.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right. Likewise, no one signed up? Anybody here representing the applicant that wished to speak? Boy, y'all are making it easy, but I know all of you aren't here just to watch, so I'm sure your case is coming up. All right, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I make a motion, we approve case number SC 25-20, Quinley Farms subdivision.
Second.
All right, Mr. Davis has made the motion to approve. Mr. Schamberger has seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye also. Motion's approved. Okay, we'll open the public hearing now for case number SC 25-22, the Burmeister subdivision. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is the application case for the SC 25-22, the Burmeister subdivision. This is also a request for a two-lot subdivision located on Pliny District 8, currently zoned B C Z. The total acreage of the subject property is approximately 29 acres, with the smallest lot being about 6.4 acres. The utilities proposed for the subdivision are on-site wells, septic tanks, and Riviera Utilities as the power provider. Wetlands were reflected and identified on the subject property, and a wetland delineation was provided for review, and the appropriate buffers are reflected on the plat. Steph is recommending approval with no specific conditions. Here is your aerial map of the location. Here is your zoning map, and here is an enlarged copy of the preliminary plat, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for staff?
Where are wetlands?
Hang on, hang on. All right, I have about five different folks signed up to speak on this, so I'll start with Dan Valentin.
Hello, everybody. Glad to meet you. I'm a resident at 17807 Orchard's Lane, which is on the south side of County Road 34, and I'm neither for nor against this. I'm just trying to find out some information. That's all I'm really here for. Can you tell me about how many houses are going to be planned?
Yes. So as proposed, they can build up to two houses on either parcels on the lots, but we're not sure if they're going to propose any further development. But as reflected here today, if they wanted to, they could build a total of two houses.
By regulation, correct?
Yes, by our regulations.
So if I see two lots, that means a total of four.
Four houses, that's right.
All right. Where would the ingress and egress be? Have you got any idea about that?
Lot 2 currently faces, I mean currently fronts on County Road 34, so they would be accessing from either east or west side of these smaller lots on the bottom here. We don't know where they would propose their driveway. And Lot 1 is currently accessing this public right-of-way that belongs to the City of Fairhope, the subdivision immediately to the north.
Okay. Will the City of Fairhope have any input into this? Okay, will the City of Fairhope have any input into this?
We shared a copy of the plat, they had no comments.
Okay. And as far as utilities are concerned, I think you stated in your opening that it was going to be done by a will and-
Septic tanks.
Septic tank, okay.
Yes.
All right, that's basically it.
Just know that if they decided to do more, want to do more than what they're showing here, they'll have to come back and do another public hearing, just like we're doing here, so-
Well, like I say, this is totally new to me, so I just wanted to see how it was going to affect-
No, good questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then I had Ronald and Sandra Von Trobe, Von Droba. I may not have said that right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So this is registered as residential property?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay. And that has no other future use to be changed to commercial or for multiple dwellings?
So far, we're not aware any zoning changes from the current zoning designation. And as I mentioned earlier, if they would like to build up to two houses, that's what it allows them per our regulations. So Lot 1 could potentially have two houses, and same for Lot 2.
Okay. What is the definition of a house? How many residents can be in a building?
How many residents?
Yeah, can it be an apartment complex?
No.
No.
It has to be a single-family dwelling, and that can be built, like a stick-built home, or it could be mobile homes.
Mobile home?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Nick? Nick, I'm not even going to try to say your last name.
If I was mistaken, I didn't know what I was doing.
All right. Joshua Baxter?
All right, I apologize for not being more prepared. What is the zoning B-C-Z?
It's base community zoning.
Base community zoning. So not residential, not commercial, it's just whatever it is?
So base community zoning is what I would describe as our lowest dense type of zoning is when the district was adopted, basically everything that were existing or are able to remain as is. But if anybody proposes like a subdivision, they would either have to split the lots where they are at least 80,000 square feet, in this case they're larger, or rezone to request something that's smaller than 80,000 square feet, or a commercial zoning if they wanted to develop it in that manner.
Okay, so just again, no more than two properties on each?
Houses.
No more than two houses on each, okay.
That's right.
What would be the process for them down the road if they wanted to turn it into a regular residential neighborhood?
They would have to come back to us with another subdivision, a preliminary plat application, give us their proposal basically, and we would go to the same technical review process to make sure it meets. But first, they'd have to rezone it if the lots were less than 80,000 square feet.
Gotcha. To something other than the B-C-Z?
Yes, so RSF 1 or 2, you know, whatever they are requesting. And we would have to provide a recommendation, just how we're doing it here, of whether it's of approval or denial, does it fit the property, does it not? We take all of that into consideration.
Okay. If that were to go forward to that, because I mean that's happening a lot in this area, is it something where the public, like we're doing now, if we have any say in that?
Oh, yeah.
Or is it something where it's only yours?
You'll get a notice just like you did on this, and it'd be publicly advertised, so it'll come back to this same group and we'll do the same thing we're doing right now. You'd see everything that's being proposed.
Yeah, the only difference here is if they were to rezone, the re zoning would go to the county commission, and for the subdivision, it would come back in front of this board.
That's correct. Okay, all right. I think that answers everything. Thank you.
All right. Kristen, did you want to speak? Okay. All right, that's all I had signed up to speak on this item. Does anybody on the Planning Commission need to ask questions? Ms. Waters, you have anything to add?
No, sir.
I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I make a motion for approval, case number SC 25-22, according to staff conditions, if any.
Mr. Schenberger's made the motion approved, I have a second.
Second.
Is that Diane? Ms. Burnett, seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye also. That motion carries. All right, we'll go to our next item, case number, I'm open in the public hearing for case number SC 25-24. This is TBG-CR87, which is plat 1 subdivision. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is case SC 25-24, the TBG County Road 87 subdivision. This request is for a two-lot, non-residential, commercial subdivision. The subject property is located in Planning District 22. It is currently zoned B2 and RA. The RA parcel being under consideration at the county commission meeting at the end of this month. The subject property is thus the southeast corner of County Road 32 and County Road 87 in the Alberta area. The approximate total acreage is of five acres, where each lot is approximately two and a half acres. The proposed utilities are East Central for Water, Baldwin County Sewer Services for Sewer, where the Sommerdale Treatment Plant will receive this sewage, and the electrical will be Baldwin EMC. The parcel viewer did show some wetlands on the southeast corner, and the wetlands are reflected with a 50-foot non-serve buffer. All right, staff is recommending approval with the following specific conditions. Provide documentation that the CTP, which stands for Commercial Turnout, has been inspected, accepted, and approved by the Baldwin County Planning and Zoning Permit Engineer. That rezoning Z2516 shall be approved by the county commission prior to the final plat approval, and that staff will issue authorization to circulate plat for signatures when all conditions have been addressed. Here is your aerial map of the subject property. Here is your zoning map of the subject property. And a copy of the final plat. Here is an enlarged image of the final plat and the landscape buffer. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Okay. I have no one signed up in opposition. Deanna, did you want to speak?
Christian, I'm just an authorized agent, property owner, and just wanted to ask a few questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? All right. I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve with the conditions set forth by staff.
Second.
Mr. Davis made the motion approved, Mr. Schenberger seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye also. Motion carries. Okay, open the public hearing now for case number SC 25-27, Cattleson subdivision. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is case SC 25-27, the Cattleson subdivision. This is a preliminary plat request for a five-lot commercial subdivision. The subject property is located in Planning District 22, currently zoned M1 for light The subject property total acreage is approximately 38 acres, with the smallest lot size being 2.98 acres. Since the setbacks are a little bit different than our typical, I'm going to go ahead and explain them for the public. The front yard setbacks are 25 feet, as well as the rear yard, and the side yards are no minimum except where abutting a residential district, in which case there shall be a minimum yard of 25 feet abutting the residential district. The utilities proposed are wells, Baldwin EMC as the electrical provider, Baldwin County Sewer Service with the Lillian Treatment Plant as the sewer provider. The drainage was prepared by the Austin Lutz and accepted by the permit engineer. No improvements are planned as part of the subdivision, and therefore the drainage patterns are to remain as is with existing conditions. No potential wetlands were identified on the subject property per the Baldwin County wetland map. Staff's recommendation is of approval with no specific conditions. Here is your zoning map and your vicinity map and a copy of the proposed plat with the second sheet reflecting what's existing. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? I have one.
Okay.
There's no water system in this area?
They're proposing wells.
So my question is, is there a water system in the area?
Because of the lot sizes that they are proposing, we can request that public water is connected, but I'm not aware-
The use doesn't require, this is a M1?
Uh-uh. For the subdivision, it does not require that they connect to public water because of the lot sizes, but any further use that when they develop these sites, they may be required to connect to public water.
Mr. Chairman, the uses, so whenever we receive a site plan for one of the lots, that would trigger, because that's more of a use thing than a division.
I get it, all right. Anybody else have a question on staff, on the Planning Commission?
Can you go back to the zoning map of what this is? Just saying, I know it's not what the topic is, this is an M1 parcel.
That's right.
98 is about a quarter mile to the north. What is this, out of curiosity, to the direct north of this parcel?
It's also M1, besides the-
Everything that is not green here is M1.
That's right. It's just like hashed, so it's kind of difficult to see a little bit.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other questions for staff? No one signed up? Okay. All right, have no one signed up? I will. Do you need to speak on this item?
Well, I'll answer your question about the water.
Well, come on, you have to come up to the mic and give us your name.
I'm Michael Johnson, I'm the surveyor of record.
Okay.
So to answer your question about the water, we reached out to the utility providers for their letters, and nobody came back with one for the water. We wore them out, so I don't know, that answers your question on the-
That's fine, the staff answers. It's something we'll obviously have to address further down the road if we need to, but I get it now, so thank you.
Okay.
All right, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this item.
I make a motion to approve case number SC 25-27.
Mr. Schenberger's made the motion approved, I have a second.
I'll second.
Ms. Burnett, seconded the motion. Any question on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye, motion carries. All right, we'll go to our next item. Open the public hearing for case number SPP 25-06, Magnolia Glen subdivision. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Okay, Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is SPP 25-06, Magnolia Glen, the preliminary plat approval request for 61 lots. This is located in Planning District 21, currently zoned RSF 2. The subject property is located south of County Road 12 and west of Magnolia Springs Highway, known as County Road 49. The surveyor, I mean the engineer of record is Mr. Dwayne Smith. As I mentioned, this request is for 61 lots. The total acreage is approximately 36 acres, with the smallest lot size being 15,000 square feet. The utilities provided are Baldwin County Sewer Service with the Fort Morgan Treatment Plant being provided in the will serve letter. I would like to emphasize that currently the plant does not have capacity, so I will address it further, but staff is recommending approval with the condition that they will be able to obtain capacity before final plat approval. The water provider is Riviera Utilities with Baldwin EMC as the electrical provider and Jigapower as the broadband. The traffic study was provided for staff to review and revise and did not warrant any traffic improvements. The drainage improvements were submitted for review and accepted by the Baldwin County Permit Engineer. Wetlands were identified on the subject property and are reflected with the appropriate buffers. No wetland field is proposed. The developer has a will serve letter from Baldwin County Sewer Service for the Fort Morgan Treatment Plant. The plant currently does not have capacity to serve the proposed subdivision. Baldwin County will not approve a final plat until the plant capacity has been sufficiently expanded to serve the proposed subdivision or sewer lines have been installed to connect the subdivision to another treatment plant with adequate capacity. The developer will proceed with construction at his or her own risk. Staff is recommending approval with these following specific conditions. The Fort Morgan Baldwin County Sewer Service plant does not currently have capacity to serve. The final plat will not be approved until the Fort Morgan plant has expanded its capacity, and that the developer is proceeding with his or her own risk of not being able to create the lots as proposed. The broadband letter is not a commitment, but states that it will work with the developer, and a commitment letter will be required for final plat approval. All amenities and landscaping shown on the preliminary plat and landscaping plans must be installed and inspected prior to final plat approval, and signs marking the boundary of the wetland buffers must be installed and inspected prior to the issuance of a subdivision permit. Here is your locator and site map, your vicinity map, a copy of your preliminary plat, and an enlarged plat with your landscape plan. Here is an excerpt from the traffic study, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions for staff?
So they did provide a letter saying they could serve the development, correct?
That's right.
How did we come up with the conclusion that they didn't have the capacity to serve?
So there's a long history, this, as we mentioned during the work session, this goes back to a development that was approved by the Planning Commission, almost across the street from this, back in December, November, December of 2023. There's some longstanding capacity issues with that plant. The utility provider has applied for an ADM permit, which is how we were even able to process the application, because that's kind of our, if you're working towards getting capacity, we can start the process, we just can't sign a final plat. But in their permit application, it's even stated that, you know, they're applying to expand the plant capacity because of existing capacity issues for the plant. So it's a pretty widely known and documented thing that the plant has capacity. The letters they insert, they give us, it shows, you know, basically whatever the flow, the most recent flow reading they have, but if you look at their flow charts and all the information to ADM, there's many months out of the year that it goes over capacity. So that's kind of how we get to the conclusion that, yes, they provided that- So that's kind of how we get to the conclusion that, yes, they provided that letter, and it said it had a couple hundred thousand gallons, but it's widely known and documented thing with the public records that it goes over capacity on a pretty regular basis.
Thank you for that explanation, I just know that's probably going to be one of the arguments when it gets to that point. Thank you.
Alright, any other questions for staff?
I have a question. Was the application before, after the new subdivision regulations were adopted on January 7?
This application was submitted in March of this year, so after the newly adopted regulations.
And the applicant's here?
Yes, I believe the engineer of records here.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Mr. Smith, did you want to come up and speak?
Good evening, Dwayne Smith, anchor engineering. We've been in communication with Baldwin County Sewer, the developer's been in communication with Baldwin County Sewer. We, we've, basically Baldwin County Sewer has given assurances that one of two things will happen, either the Fort Morgan Plant will get turned on, from what we understand, the construction of the expansions already occurred. It's just a matter of getting the permit approval to turn on the expansion area. So it's a very quick thing once the permit comes in. The other option is Baldwin County Sewer has said that they have the ability pretty easily to redirect flow to the Somerdale Plant. So if, for instance, the permit didn't come in, in time, the flow, they could redirect the flow to Somerdale. I understand that staff would need to get the details of that before they would ultimately agree to recommend approval of a final plat, but as discussed in the work session, there's a lot of money involved in putting a development like this in the ground. There's not really any developer that's willing to take that kind of risk without some sort of assurance that they're going to have the sewer capacity they need, and all. As for everything else, yes, it's done per the new subregs, meet all the green space, meet all that. Everything's, you know, per the zoning, no other potential issues out there that I know of.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Smith?
So the developer and you as the applicant are aware of the conditions that you're agreeing to?
Yes, ma'am.
And I just wanted to have that for public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
And...
You go ahead.
I think my next question is for staff.
Okay, I was gonna, I just had a question for you, if you don't mind. Will the developer proceed with the work prior to receiving that formal approval?
I'm not sure. I'm only engineer on this. But I feel certain with the, quite frankly, even financing side, the bank is going to require some assurances before they finance it.
Okay, any other question, Mr. Smith? Thank you, sir.
I have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Of staff, maybe. So if they were potentially going to recommend denial on this, would that delay it a year before it can come back up? If it's due to the sewer thing, or how does that work?
So if the subdivision is denied, it's four months that you'd have to wait before you could reapply?
It would come back with the same exact...
Understood, until something's worked out from a sewer standpoint. I guess if this was going to go to denial, I guess I would recommend a tabling to see if something could be worked out over the next month, and all, so.
That being possible, Dwayne, the option to go to Somerdale maybe, or something?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the Fort Morgan's not going to be worked out in a month. Well, I say that, things happen, but I'm not anticipating it. But more detail could be provided regarding Somerdale, I believe.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, I would just say, let's, let the public hearing go out.
Agreed.
You can come back and talk to them at the end, if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, my apologies, didn't mean to jump in.
Alright, I have one person signed up, Daniel Eastburn.
My grandfather owns the property adjacent to this. It is currently leased out to Riverview Turf, and they're offering a 40-foot buffer between us and our property, but we would like to see if we could have some fencing put in on the property line because of the road crop and, you know, the equipment and stuff like that, and we also have animals on the property. So we would like to have a better buffer there. And another concern is the spillway for their retention pond. 49 already floods. We would like to see if that is addressed, maybe. I mean, on a heavy rain, water's running across the road. I don't know if that was took into play on their engineering.
Okay. Mark, do you want to speak to that? I'm sure you guys looked at that, so...
Well, being this was submitted post-subdivision update, they're going to have to design for everything from a two to 100-year storm event, so they cannot release anything less than that. So they'll have to make sure that everything below those events are retained on-site, and it can only release the pre-development rate, so there will be no additional water coming off this site. And then we have also, within the regulations, more ability to verify that the stormwater systems were actually built per the engineers' calculations and specifications.
One thing I'd add to that, we've talked to the applicant, all, well, one thing, all those issues are worked out after this stage, when we go into construction plan review, but inside the Highway 49 right of way, there's some ditch regrading that needs to be done. There's, the ditch has got a high spot in this holding water.
That's a low area.
Right, so there's some off-site things that are going to have to be addressed, but they're fairly minor to address those things, yeah.
Alright, now our property, is it, could we have that fence put up to where we have some kind of buffer there between us and the equipment that operates that lane?
So, I mean, on your property, you can do what you want on your side. Our regulations only require the development to do the buffer, but it's also, it's not just the grass here, it's got trees and bushes, like, it's a hard barrier, right? So there's nothing in our regulations that can require us to make them put a fence up, but we do make them plan it and landscape it and make sure it's a good barrier between the adjacent use, yeah. Alright, that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Alright, that's all I had signed up on this item. Anybody else have any questions? Ms. Waters?
I have a question for staff.
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
So if, whenever it gets to that point, capacity's not there at the Fort Morgan Plant, and they have to switch to Somerdale, what is the process at that point?
So, and we have had some preliminary discussions with the utility provider on that, and what we would need is, you know, a lot of detailed information about their system and how they can actually send wastewater from a, because this is right in the dead center of the Fort Morgan Treatment Facility service area. So how, it's not as, it's a simple statement, but there's a lot of complexity from an engineering standpoint about how you take a whole area out of one facility's, you know, service area and put it to another one. It can certainly be done, but there's just, there would be a lot of information about pipe routing, valves, like, how are you going to do this? And, because there's other options, is that technically they could divert other areas that are currently going to Fort Morgan to Somerdale, that are a little bit maybe closer to that plant, and then would free up capacity in Fort Morgan, so that's, that's the utility provider's business to understand how to do that, but the point is that we would need a lot of information about their design, their flows, how they're doing things to send things to the right way, to make sure that the capacity is achieved at where this development is going.
Okay, so the process would be, if they didn't have capacity, staff wouldn't send, wouldn't approve the final permit, and at that point, they'd have to start back at day one and resubmit with Somerdale, or they could switch mid-game?
No, we have a condition that either the Fort Morgan Plant is expanded and accepted by ADM, or they have provided all of the engineering details that we would need to have to understand how the system, how the utility is providing service to this development at, within capacity.
That also would include the Somerdale Plant, so if they did route to the Somerdale Plant, all of those capacity guarantees would also have to come from that plant as well. So just because they routed somewhere, they would have still provided the same verification that that plant also had the capacity to serve it.
Okay, so what, we're only working in today, we can't work in the future. Wouldn't it be better to apply and going to the Somerdale Plant because it has the capacity, and then switch later if you get the permit there?
So, we, that's the utility, any utility company's operational prerogative to decide how they want to serve something, so we can't tell them to do that.
No.
We just said, how do you want to serve it? And then, in this situation, there's a couple ways that it can be addressed. So all we can do is say, this is how they're proposing to serve it, so we evaluate it by their proposal, we can't, you know, tell them now to, no, you need to go do that, because that's their operational business, and that's not our business, yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Burnett?
I just have a question for staff. Could you reword condition one to where it just says sewer capacity is provided by, or do you have to stick with Fort...
It needs to stick with that.
Morgan, okay.
Okay.
I have a question, along the same lines, it's kind of, it's spelled out in the specific conditions number two. The broadband letter, I mean, it goes the same way as this, this is not a go until we get a letter of commitment from GigaPower or whatever to provide broadband.
And that's great, and, you know, with broadband, that's a pretty typical condition, because they don't really, the broadband providers don't really get into their infrastructure construction until the lots are there. So basically, they'll say, yeah, we can serve, we have this situation a lot, that they can, yeah, we're willing to serve this, and that's fine, and, but we're just saying, hey, we're not going to sign the plat until you do it, because typically, they do all their stuff to actually be able to say, to guarantee they can serve it during the construction of the subdivision cell.
That's right. We usually don't get a commitment letter until final plat approval.
Okay, any other questions for staff? So Jay, as I see it, we have the option, obviously, to approve subject conditions, we have the option to deny. Do we have the option to table this, to keep them from having to resubmit? Can we table it until they get their permit and then start then?
You certainly can, I mean, and Mr. Smith mentioned, you know, it's going to be interesting, I'm not optimistic that that would be a lot of change in 30 days, but we can certainly, if that's, you know, if that's what the applicant and what you guys want to do to have, we've been exploring this situation with this property for about a year now. It's been, you know, this is about as close as we can get it without some actual, you know, permits in hand and construction activity going on for utility services.
And so the table then would be on your motion, you know, on the commission's motion, since it's not within the proper amount of time, but, I mean, you do want more information, so I think you fit within the bylaws, a reason to table something if you wanted to, to gain more information, to help you evaluate your decision.
Seems to me staff's gained pretty good bit of information from this, right, Jay? I mean, we understand the capacity of the sewer system has already been upgraded, so if they're waiting on an ADM permit to essentially allow them to start filling other tanks, what role do we have in that?
We don't have any role in that.
Right.
So that's my point, is that you certainly have the ability to table if you want to, I'm just not thinking there's going to be a lot of additional information that's going to become available in the next 30 days. Because like I said, we've been, we've been working on this issue for at least a year.
Certainly impact other developments in that area as well, so it's...
Right. Well, other than the other information being getting the permit in hand, and my point being in that is, instead of giving him the ability to go out and create a development, spend that kind of money, and something were to fall through, and he didn't get that, then we've got a development sitting out there with, with, I know he has a backup, but...
Right, my point is that if that's the, if that's the concern or the consensus, the, that's not going to resolve in 30 days. So that's, that's not going to be resolved in 30, even shifting flows to Somerdale, with the amount of information that would need to be understood, well, that's more than a 30-day process, I mean, that's probably a four, five, six-month process, you know? So, I guess, like I said, you've, we can, we can go that route if that's what the commission would like to do, and that's completely fine. You know, I'm just a little skeptical that we're going to get any more real information within 30 days, but maybe I'm wrong.
Well, we can table it longer than 30 days, can't we?
You've tabled it.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
And he's got to, he's got to still submit his development for construction plan approval, right?
That happens after final plat, they can't even do that until he goes to final plat.
That's right. So he wouldn't be able to apply for construction plans until the preliminary is actually approved.
Okay.
But I guess a short answer, Mr. Chairman, yeah, you can, you can table it for more than 30 days. So however, this is a very tricky one, like I said, this has, this has been, you know, a long work in progress to even get to where we are today. And unfortunately, there's just not an easy answer to this, it's just not, and, so...
Alright, that's why I'm exploring the options. Alright, so you hear the, you know what the options are, anybody else have any questions?
I have a question, or maybe it's a comment, the gentleman that was asking about the fence, have you spoken with the applicant about the fence? We didn't really address that, he just asked for it.
Jay addressed it.
Oh, you did? Yeah.
Yeah, we can't require it.
That's not required.
We can't require it, but they could voluntarily do it all, if all they want, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, we'll entertain a motion. I'll close the public hearing, now we'll entertain, I keep doing that.
I'll make a motion, we table this case until the September meeting.
I'll second.
Alright, Mr. Davis made a motion that we table until the September meeting, is that what you said?
Correct.
Alright. Ms. Anderson, you second that motion? Alright, so we have a motion and a second, to table until the September meeting. Any questions on the motion? Do we need to state, Aaron, do we need to state a reason for the table?
I mean, I think under the bylaws, there's a certain amount that makes you have the ability to table and run on this new information, and if they're exploring possible Somerdale or timeline, that this is going to come online, actually. I think you'd fit within there, just to be safe, which is say, you know, so that we have the time to earn additional information about the sewer capacity. Because that's all we're doing, we're not going to reopen a public hearing on anything else, I don't think that we're doing, so they, when we tie it down to that, that helps us at the September meeting.
That condition's already there, though, right? As presented by you, from the staff, it's already presented that they provide capacity for sewer, right?
That's correct, so...
So we're tabling it until they do such, so whether we approve it until they do so, or we table it until they do so, we're really not changing anything.
Exactly.
So it's...
But, I mean, you know, September is, I would say, that's a, that's a good timeframe to possibly be able to get some good, some more good information. I was, I just, you know, I just didn't think 30 days was going to be enough to really, but September would be a good timeframe, but, Ms. Schenbergs, you're right, is that either way, we're going to have to have this information, so it's, you know, whether it's, whether it's tabled, approved, denied, anything like, we can't really do anything until this utility issue's worked out.
And it seems fair, and gives them an opportunity to get the information, get it to the county for review, and come back, and maybe they'll come up with something, but we'll see.
Alright, so we have a motion? And second, any other questions on the motion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Alright, so roll call. An aye is to, is green to the motion to table it.
Mr. Davis?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Shamberger?
No.
Mr. Mullick?
Yes.
Ms. Rettiger?
Yes.
Ms. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Fletcher?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. All right, we'll entertain a hearing. Okay, so open the public hearing now for case number SPP 25-07, the Venture 87 subdivision. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Commissioner, I mean, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is application SPP 2507, the Venture 87 subdivision. This is a preliminary plat request of a four-lot subdivision located in Planning District 13, unzoned. The subject property is located west of County Road 87, north of Lynn Home Road. The total acreage of the development is approximately 23 acres, with the smallest being 2.3 acres. The proposed utilities are wells, Baldwin EMC as the electrical providers, and subto tanks. No wetlands were identified on the subject property according to the Baldwin County generalized wetland map. Under staff analysis and comments, staff analyzes that County Road 87 is classified as a major collector. Pursuant to the access management policy, a minimum spacing of 240 feet is required between existing and proposed driveways. The proposed subdivision cannot meet this spacing requirement for individual lot access. Therefore, the applicant is responsible for installing a major residential driveway with an access easement to serve all proposed lots. Staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. The applicant shall apply and obtain an approval of a commercial turnout permit for the installation of the proposed major residential driveway, and that a final plat application must be submitted and recorded within 90 days of final plat approval. Here's your vicinity map and an enlarged copy of the proposed plat. And I highlighted here in blue, they have it, a reserved for future right-of-way, and this is where, right here in the middle, where they're proposing to build the major residential driveway that will provide access to the four proposed lots. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for staff? Okay, I had one person sign, signed up, Diane Long.
I live close to this property, and my main concern is I want to know what type of structures will be built, what will be allowed.
This property is unzoned, so we do not regulate land uses here, so they can put houses, up to, up to two houses, up to two RV units if they wanted to, up to two mobile homes.
On each side?
On each lot, yes.
I also own property on Lynn Home Road, and I don't know if any of you folks have been down Lynn Home Road since that was approved. There are like little RVs, like little campers, and most of us that live out there are not happy with what has been developed. Excuse me, I'm, I'm old and I stutter. And so that is my main concern. Have no problem with a single-family home, have no problem with a double-wide manufactured home. I live in a manufactured home. But my concern is these little RVs, and people are not maintaining their property. It's beginning to look like a low-rent district, to put it nicely. So that is my main concern, is it's the type of housing that is going to be allowed.
Yes, ma'am. And unfortunately, like I said, since this is an unzoned area, whoever buys one of these four lots, they can put up to two RVs on the site if they wish. We cannot, if they exceed the number of two, then they would be violating our subdivision regulations, and they would possibly need additional subdivision permitting, but we cannot prohibit them from putting up to two RVs per lot if they wanted to.
So there's nothing that really can be done about preventing that?
Not in an unzoned area, ma'am.
So, well, I'm definitely against it, because I, I and everyone else is concerned, nobody else has just come forward to comment. And they waited when I came before the commission on the prior, on Lynn Home being approved. Everybody, nobody showed up but myself, my family, and a few people that live on Goat Cooper. And then everybody complains, like, have you seen Lynn Home? Have you seen, like, what's going up down there? And, you know, so I'm the spokesperson, so I am totally against this being approved. And I just wish we'd had more support to come and back me up, so.
All right.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, that's all I had signed up to speak. I will close the public hearing. Anybody have any questions on this before we go to a motion? All right, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve case number SPP 25-08. Is that the right one?
No, 07.
07, sorry.
Okay.
Revise the motion to approve case number SPP 25-07.
Okay. Ms. Shamberger's made a motion, we approve, they have a second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Mullick seconds the motion. Any question on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, everybody good for continuing on?
Mr. Chairman, can we, it has nothing to do with the case, but the lady that's the spokesperson, if you want to reach out to staff, there is a process if you wanted to change and become a zoned district, and they can explain the process with one of the staff members. And then there would be a blueprint of what can and can't be done, whereas being unzoned, a lot of things, there's no regulations on it.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing now for case number SPP 25-08. This is the BFLC Calpin Creek Phase 3 subdivision. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is case SPP 250A, the BFLC Calpin Creek Phase 3. This is a preliminary plat approval for a five-lot residential subdivision. The subject property is located on the western side of County Road 87, south of Yauti, Iten Overpass, in the Elsinore area, and this is unzoned in Planning District 13. There's a long property history here that y'all had in your staff report, so I'm going to skip that.
That's fine.
If that's okay with you.
Hopefully, everybody's read it. I'd say, go on.
The total acreage of the subject property is approximately 118 acres, with the smallest being three acres. The utilities proposed are wells, subto systems, and this Baldwin EMC is a proposed power provider. There were no potential wetlands reflected on the parcel per the Baldwin County Wetland Generalized Map. Actually, my apologies, there were potential wetlands reflected with the appropriate 50-foot buffer. This was prepared by Mary Booth, and she has inserted here an excerpt from the previous approval of this application, so you have seen this before. The applicant previously submitted an application, which was approved by the planning commission with the condition to approve to install common driveways. The common driveways were to be installed, inspected, and accepted before submitting for final plat. However, the applicant submitted a final plat, which had been circulated for signatures prior to staff granting permission, and staff worked with the applicant to allow revisions to the final plat application, but they could not achieve within the 60-day review period. Therefore, staff denied the final plat application, and additionally, the original preliminary plat had expired prior to receiving final plat approval. Thus, the reason of y'all seeing this project again in front of you. Staff's recommending approval with one specific condition. Once the preliminary plat approval has been granted, the applicant shall submit the final plat application for review and approval to circulate the plat for signatures. No signature will be obtained. Prior to the authorization, and all signatures on the plat shall be dated after authorization has been granted. Here's your aerial imaging, your vicinity map, and a copy of the proposed preliminary plat. And I'm happy to answer any questions, so you may have.
Okay, any questions for staff? Ms. Burnett?
Was this, I actually have a question for the chairman. Was this part of the plat that, you know, they keep coming in, for everybody, I guess, with five lots, six lots, and then there was a discussion about a...
Master plan.
Traffic?
Yes.
Analysis, is this part of that?
This one technically is further away, but the traffic study did capture 87 and 64 in Lynn Home. And they are installing common driveways per our requirements, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but there were no, like, turnouts, or, I mean, you know, turn lanes or anything to that effect that was required, other than the common driveways.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff? I had no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone representing the developer that wanted to speak? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, we approve case number SPP 25-08.
All right, Mr. Davis made a motion to approve, they have a second?
Second.
Ms. Shamberger has seconded the motion.
With conditions set forth by staff. I think there was a condition in there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes yes. Motion carries. Okay, open the public hearing now for case number SPP 25-11. This is the CC 77 subdivision. Anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Ms. Waters?
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is case SPP 2511, CC 77 subdivision. This preliminary plat request is for a 17-lot residential subdivision located in Planning District 22, currently zoned RA for rural agricultural. The subject property is located west of CC Road, north of County Road 32, and south of Cactus Court. The total acreage of the subject property is approximately 72 acres, with the smallest lot size being three acres. Wetlands were identified on the subject property, jurisdictional and non-jurisdictional, and they are all reflected with the appropriate buffers. The proposed utilities are wells, subto tanks, and Baldwin EMC as the power provider. All driveways, as under staff analysis, staff noted that all driveways must meet the access management policy at the time of installation of the driveways. Staff did receive one public comment in opposition, like via voicemail to our office, so I just wanted to note that here. Staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. Originally, in your staff report, they had a condition to revise the wetland buffers, and they have since cured that and provided an updated plat. So the only condition that remains is that the applicant shall apply for final plat application. That will be approved and reviewed administratively. Here is your zoning map, your vicinity map, enlarged plat. And I tried to make it a little bit more clear here in the PowerPoint. The surveyor did provide us a driveway distance site plan, where he is reflecting that they can achieve a minimum of 120 feet of distance between the proposed driveways. Since a CC road is a local road, that's 120 is the minimum that the driveways would have to be apart. So as you can see here, they did provide us that. Most of them are about 135 in distance, some a little bit closer, right at the 120, but ultimately, they all meet it. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for staff?
I have a question on lot number four. The way that they have it subdivided with the wetlands, is there still space for a buildable?
Yes, there is over 40,000 square feet of upland areas on the southern side of lot four, or eastern, because it's rotated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, explain, very seldom, ironically, that we see this many lots on subto tanks. I can't remember the last time. Most everything now is on sewer, so this one is not. So the health department's obviously more involved on this development than normal.
That's correct.
When, is the process the way, Jay, it used to be, where you go, they have to go in and get a preliminary approval with the health department, with doing PERC tests on each lot, and same process?
Yeah, that had to change, yeah. That's, that's all the health department process, yeah.
So they'll have to provide that, get that, and provide it to you all at some point with location of wells, it can't be within, I assume, again, within 100 feet of the system, so they got to...
Right, and what you're saying there is exactly why, this came up on a couple of different applications tonight, about the 40,000 square feet of buildable area outside of the wetlands, because that's, that's a, a big trigger thing from the, from the health department about being able to permit a subto tank on a lot like that.
Yes.
So that was one of the additions we had with our subdivision regulation amendment, and it's proven to be beneficial.
Okay. All right, no one signed up on this one? Anybody else have any questions? All right, I entertain a motion. I'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve case number SPP 25-11, subject to staff conditions.
Okay, Mr. Mullick made a motion to approve, they have a second?
Second.
I'm going to go with Jamie on that one.
Please, y'all are working me to death.
Ms. Rettiger seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes yes. Motion carries. Okay, we'll go to our next item, open the public hearing for case number SPP 25-15, Heritage Farms subdivision. Anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Ms. Waters?
Thank you. This is SPP 2515, Heritage Farms subdivision, with a preliminary plat approval request for 23 residential lots. The property is located in Planning District 22, also zoned RA. The subject property is located east of County Road 83 and south of County Road 32, approximately two miles north of the town of Alberta. The total acreage of this property is around 80 acres, with the smallest lot size being about three acres. There is a highway construction setback along County Road 83 that is, requires 75 feet from the center line of the right-of-way at the time of recording. Wetlands were reflected on, were identified and are reflected on the preliminary plat as non-jurisdictional and jurisdictional with its appropriate buffers. The proposed utilities are for water, east-central Baldwin, for power, Baldwin EMC, and also subto tanks. Staff's recommending approval with the following condition. Staffs recommending approval with the following conditions: that all permanent signage regarding the jurisdictional wetlands on the southeast corner must be installed before any land disturbance begins following the issuance of the subdivision permit. And also, for the applicant to add a note to the effect that the western non-jurisdictional stormwater management area are not to be filled or modified. Here is your zoning map and your vicinity map. Here is an enlarged copy of your preliminary plat and your landscaping plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Is the area to the north of the cul-de-sac the little strips behind the lot, is that for drainage?
Right here?
Yes.
I believe this is, this common area, there's no drainage wells up here, but Josh, can you remember them?
No. The only drains they have is that CA4. I think that's just access.
I believe the engineer or the property owners are here, so they may kind of answer that for you.
Okay. Was it the property owner's choice, or the staff worked with them to do the extension to the south? Did they choose to do that all the way to the property line?
The Hemmerhead?
Yeah. I'm just wondering, do we, do we require them to extend it to the property? They chose to do that?
Mm-hmm. That was their original design.
All right.
I have a question on the streets. Is that dedicated to county, or will that remain private?
They will, they're proposed to be dedicated to Baldwin County.
Okay. Any other questions? I had no one signed up. Is there an applicant here that wants to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Jay Robertson with Sawgrass Consulting. And to answer your question about the common area on the north side, that is for, there's kind of an existing drainage ditch there that there's off-site water, about 18 acres that drains from the north to the south.
Okay.
And just, we put that in there to...
All right.
Keep it off the lots. But happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, sir. No one signed up to speak, so I'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion we approve, case number SPP 25-15.
Mr. Davis made a motion to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burnett seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye. Open public hearing now for case number SRP 25-08 and SV 25-09. This is the Nancy Hayden revised plat and variance. Anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Ms. Waters?
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is the SRP 25-08 and SV 25-09, Nancy Hayden progress, project. The request is to extend the exterior boundary of a recorded, of a lot of a recorded subdivision, Marlow Meadows, to allow Lot 9 to be increased by three acres. The subject property is located on District 14. It is currently zoned, one lot is based community zoning, and the other is RA for rural agricultural. The subject property is located north of County Road 32 and west of County Road 59, approximately three miles west of the town of Somerville. As I mentioned, the request is to extend the boundary of the recorded Marlow Meadows subdivisions to allow, allow Lot 9 to be increased by three acres. Skip here. I'm going to skip through the analysis, there's so much, unless y'all'd like me to go through it. But basically, Ms. Hayden is, she owns Lot 9 of Marlow Meadows, and she is interested on purchasing three acres from Mr. Norton, her neighbor on the west side. And because she is in a recorded plat, she's having to do the revised plat application. But we also did not want to bring the remaining 32 acres that belong to Mr. Norton into the subdivision, so that's why the variance for the remnant parcel had to go along with it. Staffs recommending the request, recommending approval with one specific condition, that they will apply and obtain approval for an exemption for a common movement of property lines to adjust the lot lines between the two parcels. Here is your zoning map and your vicinity map, and a copy of Ms. Hayden's survey that shows the existing and the new proposed property lines. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. Does, no one signed up to speak? Does anybody wish to speak? Okay. I will close the public hearing then. Do we need to vote separately on these?
Yes. Yes, please.
Variance first?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the variance for SV 25-09.
Okay. Mr. Stradler's made a motion to approve the variance request. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Mullick seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye. Motion carries. Okay. Now, entertain a motion on SRP 25-08.
I make a motion that we approve SRP 25-08 with specific conditions made by staff.
Okay. Mr. Stradler's made a motion to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burnett seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye. Motion carries.
That's it for your subdivision cases.
What's that?
That's it for your subdivision cases.
[laughing]. Do what now? We ought to get that under consent agenda. So, you're gonna talk to us?
Well, you got a couple of, just, I mean...
Go ahead.
So, y'all noticed we, you know, part of our restructure, we had a couple of different things. We haven't really talked about, I always hope that there's any more public comments, but was section for commissioner comments or anything else that we haven't already talked about?
Nope. Anybody have any comments?
I have just a question. When the case comes back later on for Magnolia Glen, when it's tabled, can we have something in our agenda that is supporting what the applicant is saying and not just...
Yeah, whatever, there would be, what the additional detailed information that we're able, we would have obtained by then would be included in the packet, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, another part of what we're gonna do each month is have a director's report, and I just realized I had a typo on my slide there, didn't make directors possess it, but that's okay. But, so, each month, you know, we can give a little report. First piece, kind of what we're gonna do is have an update on ongoing projects this month. Getting Mark to give you guys a public update on a lot of the transportation projects, but then, after he's done with that, I'll go through kind of a summary of what the rezoning actions were by the county commission, so y'all can understand what was, what happened there. Go through a summary of the permits issued today. It's really good to kind of track those metrics, to see how we're balancing over time and where we have hotspots and different things. It's, it's good long-range planning information for, for the board and for the staff to understand all that stuff. But then, a little bit of update on interagency coordination. So, so, we'll start off with Mark. He can go through some updates on transportation projects.
Just wanna go ahead and go through a couple of, what I'll call, some of our milestone projects that are focused on capacity and connectivity, which has been two of the really goals of the county commission through their strategic goals. So, we've been focused on projects that's gonna improve capacity, reduce congestion, as well as provide additional connectivity. So, here's, here's the first one we'll talk about. Underway right now, as we speak, is a widening project on County Road 64, so it starts at 181 and goes approximately two miles east. We're currently working on the first phase of that, which is the clearing and grubbing, and this is where they're gonna go through, remove all the vegetation that's in the acquired right-of-way. We have all the right-of-way in hand. Set back fences, move signs, just get everything ready for the second phase, which will be utility relocations. There is an awful lot of utilities that need to be relocated to make room for the road widening. That will probably take approximately a year, year and a half. And then, once that's complete, then we'll come in and actually go through and build the road widening sections, as well as some intersection improvements, a signal at County Road 54. And of course, this is gonna be a three-lane section for two miles on County Road 64. So, greatly needed in that area. If you look at the, the map I have, a lot of schools in the area, connects all the way back through the locks into 59, so it's part of a major, a major collector, as well as a, really a route that connects two arterials, which is State Route 181 and State Route 59. So, another project we just completed for some minor striping work left, permanent striping work left, and this is correcting a skewed intersection at Old Foley Road and Highway 98. This is in Foley, as you're going into Alberta. And so, there's been this weird angle for years, and we've had a lot of accidents at this intersection. So, what we have now is what you're looking at in the, in the photographs, is what the intersection looks like as you approach. We elevated that intersection, bringing it in to the same elevation as State Route 98, and it's in a super elevation section, so it's already kind of embanked. So, we elevated that road several feet to bring it in at 90 degrees, and we also have a right-turn lane going on to Old Foley Road off of Highway 98. So, this was just completed last week. We've got the permanent striping is the only thing remaining, and a few punchless items. So, if you get a chance to look at it, it's greatly gonna improve visibility and safety at this intersection. Another project's underway. This is a safety and capacity improvement project. We're adding a new traffic signal at County Road 12 and County Road 65. It's a busy intersection. We have a temp signal that you can see in the foreground of the first, that's not permanent. That's only there for the construction. There'll be a mast arm signal at this location, and we're also adding turn lanes on all four legs of this intersection. So, that's some of the widening work that you're seeing in the second picture. This will be completed probably about towards the end of the year. Then, the first phase, our extension of County Road 65, where we're gonna continue to push County Road 65 northward. Our goal is to eventually have County Road 65 connect from Bonsecourt at County Road 10 all the way through to State Route 104 in Robertstown, which, where it becomes Palmer Street when it gets behind Walmart. So, we know we've reserved some right-of-way along some of the subdivisions that you guys have approved along this route, but we just have finished paving the segment between County Road 24 and County Road 28. We've already acquired the right-of-way to get from 28 to 32, and then from 32 to 34. Those segments will be coming in the, the next year, and so, we'll be extending this further north. 32 will include a traffic signal at 32. We know that's gonna be busy as soon as that is installed, day one, and we're currently working on the environmental document to go from County Road 36 up to 48. So, we're looking ahead at that for next year to do the permitting and look at the environmental documents for that. And then, the, we see this kind of getting to 36 first, and then from County Road 36 to 48, a substantial amount of wetlands. We gotta, we gotta navigate, as well as probably at least two bridges in that segment. So, it'll take us a little bit longer, but our goal, again, is to eventually get 65 extended all the way through to State Route 104, be a great north-south corridor for our locals to use, and not have to rely on only state routes to get north and south through the county. So, this is another project. If y'all have seen, there has been a lot of detours in the last few months, probably the last six months, around the county for various drainage improvement projects. These were all part of an ER grant that we received from areas that overtopped or failed during Hurricane Sally. And so, what we have is 29 locations throughout the county we've been working on the last four to six months, and we're almost done with all of them. We had a few left to go. But what we've been doing is replacing old culverts with new culverts, and when we have larger culverts, replacing those with BOTS culverts. And those are the ones that take a lo, the longest timeframe to install, and what you see in there are two culverts, that's County Road 24 and County Road 65, some of the culvert, BOTS culverts we just recently completed. We just put an announcement out today for a segment of County Road 32 between 87 and 95, that we have some, some improvements to make to a bridge that's there, settling on both sides, so there'll be another closure coming on that. That's only for about three to four weeks on that one, so it's a lot closer to reopening than some of these BOTS culvert projects were. And then, finally, and what you've seen tonight in some of the spacing diagrams, is the results of an adopted access management policy. And so, what I will walk you through very quickly is some of the highlights of that access management policy that where we worked with Jay and his team, with Josh especially, and Tucker in our group, and Tyler before him, to develop access management standards that can be applied to these subdivisions throughout the county, as well as residential and existing smaller lot subdivisions. So, first of all, we have narrowed down the types of driveways that can be permitted by the county to really four. First is an agriculture turnout. This, we didn't have this before. A lot of counties do. This is an agriculture permit for, for farmers that need access to, to, to fields, and so it kind of gives them some guidelines. This is, this is issued through our barns. Does not have to go through a commercial process. The second is a minor residential. This is a typical turnout you would see for a single-family dwelling, for one lot. Then, we have a major residential turnout. This is new. This kind of took the place of a common driveway. It meets the standards of a common driveway, because it goes from two lots to five lots, but it more dovetails better with our subdivision regulations, where anything above five lots is a major subdivision. So, this is allowed for anything from two to five lots, so family subdivisions, they'll have to do some improvements within the right-of-way. They'll have to build a driveway to serve more than, if you got anywhere from two to five lots. So, that gives us a nice little medium driveway that, that's needed. You got a lot of cars, even on a five-lot subdivision, with up to two dwelling units per lot, that's 10 lots. That's up to 100 trips a day that you could see coming off of just a five-lot subdivision. So, this addresses that, and gives us something that we can work with applicants on, and little better driveway setup than what we have today. And then, finally, probably some of the most important things that we've implemented is we have standards now for the driveway spacings for both commercial and residential, and that is 240-foot spacings on arterial and collector roads. These are the roads that are actually classified by ALDOT within our county, and then 120-foot spacing on all local roads. These are all the unclassified roads. Now, commercial turnouts and commercial developments still have to follow the subdivision regulations and the standards set forth in our planning and zoning ordinances. So, they will still have to follow those regulations. In those instances, if it's a commercial or major development subdivision, those follow into commercial turnout as well. We have put in our access management plan, they have to meet ALDOT standards for the spacing and development of those. But because each one of those have a different design template, depending on if it's a gas station, if it's a commercial strip, if it's a subdivision, we don't try to spec, speculate as to what the design needs to be. The development needs to dictate to us what they want for the design, and we apply the ALDOT access management regulations as to the turn lanes, the traffic studies, the spacing on a commercial, and especially, when you get to corner spacings, that's another thing we've included in our access management. Residential driveways, making sure that there's enough space from a residential driveway to a, a major roadway on a corner lot. Again, if you are a commercial driveway, if you are a gas station or something that wants to develop on a corner lot, the ALDOT access management is what we'll be applying to set those, those standards for that development. And that's pretty much it with, for me. Y'all got any questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
In our agenda, I noted, there's... In our agenda, I noted, there's about, there were about three different items that said "commercial turnout," even though it was residential. And I just, it's the first time I recall reading that. Maybe it was there before.
It was, yeah.
Why is it "commercial"?
Because it exceeds five lots. It, it, it's, it's the, it's the scale of, of what the type of impacts that will have on transportation.
Well, this one is a five-lot subdivision.
It's still, the commercial turnout, it, it, because the, the, anything two to five lots, those driveways have to be paved, so they're still gonna follow the same kind of review process. But as far as the actual application of what type of turnout has to be built, it will fall under that major residential. So that's something we may have to look at on some of the, the...
It was just confusing to me, because when I was reading it, I thought, oh, I thought this was residential. It's a land use issue. It's whether it's commercial or residential. And I know it's guidelines that you're looking at, ALDOT guidelines, right?
Yep. Well, they are for the, the commercial, and for residential, we apply our own access management.
It was just confusing to me, and that's why I wanted to ask you about it.
We'll look at that, make sure that what's being submitted to you guys for review is consistent with our own policies. The terminology is, we want to make sure the terminology matches up.
Right. It's terminology only.
I got an update too. A lot of, so before we came out with this, it was basically either residential or commercial. So everything ever, two lots was a CTP. So going forward, all the new permits will have additional, you know...
So I just saw it this time, but it's always been there?
Well, yeah. So all the, all the permits that have been issued have been under the old, you know, system. So now we will have more different types.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, the general public, by the way, won't agree with me, but you can take your time on County Road 52. You can pull them off and send them somewhere else. I won't mind a bit.
That was, that was another bots culvert that's gonna be there. It will be a little while, so...
Good, yeah.
I have a quick question. The 29 locations that the county's been working on to fix the flooding from Sally, is the one on, off of 180 in Surfside, and is that included in that, or that was something completely different?
That is, it, it is, but we've got a different, that's its own project because of the scale of that.
Right.
But it's, it's well in the way, we've got the crossing in, and so that, that was a major milestone. We got the outfall. We had to start downstream and work our way upstream. So we have the, the downstream outfall is, is pretty much in. It's gotta be graded. Then we have the crossing, and now we'll work our way on the south side in the neighborhood. But that's gonna help with flooding in that neighborhood that overtop Fort Morgan Road at that, at that location as well.
Thank you for that.
No problem.
Hey, Mark. Just a comment. So there's, this is, you're the transportation department, or...
We're a little bit of everything.
Okay. So here's my comment. There's other types of transportation, and the reason I'm talking about this is I come from an area that, that prioritizes bike lanes, walking paths, and things like that. So I'd like you and your department to consider widening some of these roads for bike lanes. I mean, it scares the crap out of me when I'm going down 59 and there's a guy on a bicycle on the road, and, you know, it's dangerous.
Right.
And so the, the future's hitting us pretty quick here. You got more e-bikes, you got carts, you got different types of transp, transportation, including foot transportation. I'd like to see more sidewalks and bike lanes. I, I don't know if that's, it, it, you know, I watched the 30-Q...
It's all about, it's all about location. It's all about location.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. But, you know, you know, I drive through Foley and Robertsdale, and like I said, it does scare the crap out of me when there, there's a guy on a bicycle going down the side of the road, and I gotta share it with him, and there's no room for that person.
And I'll tell you, my experience has been, and I've got a lot of experience with building a lot of bike lanes, and not seeing them utilized.
Well, I understand that.
And that's a whole nother challenge. You build it, and they don't use it. They still drive on the road, because that's where they want to be.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but...
Well, absolutely. We, we lurking at that, and actually, we're, we just applied for a TAP grant to extend the multi-use trail down Highway 98, and I think this next segment will get what its current terminus is, all the way into Magnolia Springs. So we are looking at that. So we work with the Trailblazers quite a bit over on the eastern shore, and trying to bring that into the Foley area eventually, and interconnect that with some other locations.
I, I realize you have financial constraints in those areas too, but I'd like, I'd like to see more of them, to tell you the truth.
Okay.
And I can add a little bit to that, and which will, you know, you know, we have our first little, hopefully short kickoff work session for the master plan after the regular meeting ends. But a lot of that, when it comes to how streets are handled, how roadways are handled, you have, we, we, you start looking at on a more kind of localized community basis, because, you know, Mark and his staff, they've got several thousand of miles of roads to deal with around the county. So obviously, you know, paths and bike lanes are not, not their main priority, but in some of these sectors around the county, it becomes an important thing in, in the right area. And I think that's how, we, we have to have a kind of a strategic way to approach that, and not just, you know, just start putting places where they may not be used. So that's how we'll get to things like that. We're gonna get working on that. Okay. So next, we'll go through a quick update on the actions by the, zoning actions by the county commission on May 20th. There were only, I believe, three rezonings proposed. The first, one of them, you guys heard, which is this first one, Jim and Don Enterprises. The other two went straight, the first two that went straight to the county commission. If you recall, this was out on, in Mifflin area off of County Road 20. And they had, you know, this property had been back and forth to us a few times, and finally, they landed with this one smaller piece of the property, rezoned to RA to RSF2. It was kind of a coin toss on the regulations, like it checked, it met all the regulations and zoning ordinance, but it still also didn't really make sense from a timing standpoint. You guys recommended it all, and the county commission also denied it. So that, that application was, was denied. The first, one, one of the first ones that went straight to the county commission was this area over off of Woodpecker Lane, off of County Road 55. It was in a neighborhood, it's currently zoned RSF1, as well as the rest of the neighborhood route. They were trying to rezon to RR. I believe this one was, had like a welding business or something, so we're like, hey, this is not appropriate to do in the middle of a neighborhood. So it was also denied. The last rezoning was over off of County Road 26 and Grantham Road. It was out in the middle of, if you guys know that area, it's a big agriculture area. There is a little RV park right across the street. Anyway, they were wanting to zone from RR to B3. It, you know, didn't make any sense at all in that area, so it was, was also denied. The last zoning action that they had was the updates to the PD 26 local provisions, which, you know, you all heard that. It was the, you know, allowing PRDs with certain criteria, and that, that was approved by county commission as well. So that's, that's what happened last meeting, and we'll, we'll go through that every month, just so y'all can, you know, understand what, what's, what's happening from a zoning standpoint. You, you guys get the staff reports, you know, so you, you kind of, we want to just kind of close that loop, so that y'all know how, what actions were taken off the reports y'all see. The next will be a little quick update on permits issued to date. So it's kind of runs a month in a rear, so like this, our, our reports will be, so this report ends April 30th. But just showing a little bit of trend of how we're working, you know, the, the permits issued, you know, we're, we're kind of staying pretty level with what we had last year. Some areas are down a little bit, but going through some of the specifics, you know, we have, you know, approximately the same number of preliminary plat applications in for the first, you know, through April. Final plats was, was down a little bit, but that's just, you know, a, a condition of, you know, everybody knows that not all preliminary plats make it all the way through. Some of, some, some projects die on the vine, and they don't ever get to final plat. And some of them just take a little longer to construct. So we are down a little bit on the final plat, number of applications. The subdivision exemptions, you know, are, are coming down. We're, we're getting really making sure there, that those exemptions are following the law, because, and I'll show you in a minute why that's important. There's, there's a lot of lots being created through exemptions. And PUDs are, are down a little bit. There's not as many of those going on right now. But when you look at the number of lots being created, so we did have a big influx at the end of last year on preliminary plats, so you see why that big number of, of number of lots approved, despite, most of that was really, had been applied for last year, but just didn't get approved until the beginning of this year. Final plat lots, it's pretty much on par with last year. I'm working to find, I really want to track a five-year trend. Three years is not really enough to show what the trends really are doing, because obviously, you know, you have peaks and valleys in the market, and but, but it, for right now, what I can pull out of Sid and Serve, I've, I've got three years. So we're pretty much on par with the number of lots entering the market, and that's really the most important piece from, from a residential standpoint of, of our plan, thing to monitor is how many lots are actually getting completed and delivered to market? Because like I said before, there's a lot of preliminary plats getting approved that, you know, really don't ever come to fruition. Subdivision exemption lots, you can see there's, it's down slightly from last year, but what was, you know, important to know, if you look at the, you know, we created 375 lots through final plats, but we've created 212 lots through exemptions. I mean, that's pretty doggone close. And that's, you know, that shows you how much people are using the exemptions, and some of them very legitimately, some of them, you know, work finding loopholes in the regulations to, to get around things. But that's one of the things that we're watching really closely and trying to monitor and make sure that we get our regulations right, because it, it can call, you know, comprehensively, it can cause a lot of, you know, concern about creating too many lots that way. Fortunately, our, the access management plan, policy that Mark just went over applies to exemptions and everything. So even if they're going through exemptions, they're still gonna have to install the driveways and do the things that really impact the community. So, you know, we're, we're, we're adapting the best we can to, to manage that. And the PED units, I mean, that's, you know, just completely dropped off, so we're not seeing nearly as many RV parks and things like that in the first quarter of this year as we saw pre, last year in the report. So zoning issues, the number of rezoning cases is drastically up. I think that's a direct correlation to the new zoning districts that have been recently adopted. They're, they're kind of coming into the cycle now. We've seen a lot of things that are coming in that were probably miszoned to begin with, and are gonna kind of correct it. So it's nothing of really any concern, but we're just seeing a little bit of a, of a correction to some of the new zoning districts coming onboard. PRDs, you know, we did have several PRDs towards the end of last year, but the first quarter of last year, we didn't have any. We've only had one this year. That PRD was actually an existing RV park that was converting the type of, you know, ownership in it. So it wasn't necessarily a new project. It was really converting an old project into, but the zoning variances, you can see they're trending down, which is a good sign that our regulations were, are much more cleaned up now. We're not having so many gray areas that we're having to go through the variance processes on, so that's a good sign. And commercial commission site plans are slightly down as well. So, so that's kind of where we are with our permanent, is there any questions on that before I move on to the last little piece?
On the rezonings, you're just charting the ones that get approved, you're not doing the application?
Yes, I'm sorry. All these are things that are approved. Like, if, if things are denied, that, that are not issued, they don't go in here. These, these are permits issued or approvals. Interagency coordination, we did work with Mobile Bay NEP and the county commission to, to get a grant to, to fund some additional hydraulic gauges into our AGWA system. And what, what, what we have, we have a, it's not county-wide, but we have it in multiple watersheds around the county, gauges and hydraulic models, so we can monitor how stormwater's reacting in the watershed. And it's really important for that piece of it, is that as we have these big rain events, one, we know where we have issues, and can address it appropriately, and it helps us with long-range planning for county projects, such as regional detention, and understand how to prioritize those things. But as well as, you know, as we start looking at proposed developments in these watersheds, we can look at those hydraulic models and, and use that more comprehensively as we're reviewing their stormwater systems, to make sure that the impacts of the watershed as a whole is, is, you know, is, meets our regulation. So it's a, it's a fantastic tool. We, we already have a lot of it in place. We're adding four new gauges in, and then next year, we'll be able to have models of those new, new gauges. Three of them are on Sticks River. You know, obviously, it's been in the news a lot lately, there's been a lot of, I mean, Sticks River's always had a lot of flash flooding issues. But it's, you know, it's becoming more and more prominent, more and more people are finding that area. So it's because, so it's good to kind of get ahead of the curve and understand what that watershed's doing, so we can make sure we manage that proactively instead of reactively. The second piece of that grant was, as y'all, you all know, that our LID requirements, what I was told, water regulations, a lot of discussion about that from the development community was understanding how that's gonna be reviewed, and how to use it properly to meet those requirements. So the, the grant's also funding the development of an LID review tool, it's a software that we can, us and the staff and the, and the developers can use to run their stormwater designs through, just to make sure it's meeting those, those criteria for the LID standards that are required by our regulations now. And part of that, in addition to developing the tool, we'll also have some training sessions that the consultant would come in and train the staff, citizens, development community, whoever wants to understand how this works. They could, you know, we could have training on, on that. The other thing, yeah, we're, we're constantly working with the cities. We have four cities that have ETJ agreements with us, so we have overlap with subdivisions that are going on. Those, those plats do not come to you guys, they go to the city planning commissions, but there's a lot of things, especially with our new regulations, our new access management things, that we have to really work closely with them, and making sure that that's going through the process in the right sequence, so we don't get things kind of tangled up in, in a process. That's all, all of I have for, for the first months of the report. Glad to answer any questions.
What are the four ETJs?
Magnolia Springs, Sommerdale, Foley, and Loxley. Well, and Silver Hill has one for building permits, but not P&amp;Z stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it?
That's it. Just, like I said, Ryan, after, after, if you guys can hang around for a few minutes after the meeting adjourns, I do have a little, little work session, so to start work, introducing the master plan process, and just kind of get you guys engaged in that.
Okay. I, I probably should have done it before. I think that's what you were alluding to. Aaron, did you have anything you need to say tonight?
I did not.
Nothing else from staff? I didn't ask about public comments, but I don't think anybody's signed up to speak, so. All right, with that, we'll adjourn. I need to take a break. I don't know if anybody else does. About a five-minute break, and then Jay, you gonna do?
Yeah. And we'll, I, we'll keep this as short as possible with the, because I know it's, it's been a little bit of a long meeting, so we won't take too much time with the work session.